You're ready? We're going to get started. We are going to open up the meeting. It is 7:03. The meeting of the Altadena Town Council is open. Today's October 17th. It is 7:03 PM. Meeting open. Yes, we're going to have our last salute.
Has Skylar arrived? Okay, in lieu of Skylar, Captain Williams. I have no intro for you, except that we have an incredible sheriff's station captain.
Your mic on, Nick.
Sorry about that. Captain Williams, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
It would be my pleasure. If we can all stand, face the flag, place our right hands over our hearts. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to the roll call. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Let's start our roll call. Victoria Knapp.
President.
Connor Cipolla.
Excused.
Diane Marcusson.
Excused.
Sylvia Vega.
Here.
Billy Malone. Thank you. Nick Aronson.
Here.
Chris O'Malley.
Here.
Melissa Marona.
Here.
Dorothy Wong is here. Sorry, Doug Cauliflower.
Here.
Reginald Wilkins.
Present.
Pat Sutherland.
Here.
Alan Peck.
Excused.
Veronica Jones.
Here.
Alan, I'm sorry. Rod Bryce.
Excused.
So that's...
Eleven.
Eleven.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Thank you. Okay, we move on to approve our meeting agenda. Councilmember Knapp.
Good evening, fellow council members and community members, both here and watching online at home. There are agendas in the back of the room as well as public comment cards. The council welcomes input from the community on both agendized and non-agendized items. If you would like to make public comment, please fill out the card at the back of the room and give it to a councilperson on either end of the dais. While the council does not respond to public comment either during the meeting, if you would like a response, please include your contact information. This process is in place so that everyone wishing to make public comment has the time to do so and that we can conduct this meeting in an orderly fashion. Councilmembers, the Altadena Town Council Executive Committee met on Tuesday, October 10th, to set the agenda for tonight's meeting. The agenda was circulated to you on Saturday, October 14th. I received no changes. Are there any changes to the agenda? Hearing none, I move the agenda be approved.
Second. All those opposed?
No, favored.
All those in favor?
That was a trick there.
Go straight to the negative.
Okay, the agenda is approved as presented. Thank you. Okay, I'm glad everybody's in a good mood tonight. We're good.
So far.
I hope it's like that all through. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the chairman's report. That's me. I'm going to give up my time because I have the election report and that's going to take a little while, so I'd rather use that time there. Okay? So we move on to the vice chairman's report. Councilmember Knapp.
Council, or Chair Jones, I yield my time in the interest of time.
Oh, thank you. We are in a good mood.
I yield my time in the interest of time. I can.
You don't get any time, anyway. Okay, 2.3, Recording Secretary, Councilmember Aronson.
I will not yield my time. I need to give the minutes from September 19th council meeting. Minutes were sent out to full council last week. I did make one name spelling correction. Are there any changes tonight? Seeing none, Chair Jones, I move we accept the minutes as delivered.
Any?
Second.
Okay, second.
We have lost all decorum here.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes moved as presented.
Is anyone not here last meeting?
No, we were all here.
We were all here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our treasures report.
For the period starting 9:01:23 and ending 9:30:23, we began the billing period with $1,000... Okay, $1,811.43. We had $99.99 for deposits and credits. $539.95 worth of withdrawals. We had an ending balance of $1,371.47. Yeah, that's it. As always, I'd like to remind everybody that the Altadena Town Council is a volunteer organization that depends on your generosity in order to thrive and pay for, you know, our website and things. So in the spirit of the 21st century, I'm going to pass the can around. It's like church. If you can donate like a quarter, a dollar, you know, whatever it is, we will accept it generously.
Yes, and we appreciate it and we put it to good use. Okay, thank you.
Very good use.
We're going to move on to our corresponding secretary. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. So today is October 17th. We've had a very lively and exciting October, which you'll hear about as well November coming up. But just some highlights that are happening through the rest of this month. If you're a Lincoln Avenue Water customer, Friday, October 20th at 10:00 AM is the Board of Directors meeting. And maybe we can also announce those for others, the other water districts when we learn about those meetings. October 21st at Loma Alta Park is the Power of Partnerships from 10 to 3. So this is being put on by LA County Department of Mental Health. There's going to be free concerts from Michael Higgins. Also on October 23rd, Monday, Altadena Historical Society presents Between Two Worlds: An Armenian-American Woman's Journey Home. That'll be here at the Community Center. November 4th at Loma Alta Park, 1st to 3rd, and My Tribe Riser hosting Smush Ball. If you have any events, just send me an email, dorothy.wong@altidinatowncouncil.org. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to our public safety reports. Can we have our Altadena Sheriff? Captain Jabari Williams. Oh, good.
Good evening again. So I'll just start with some crime stats. It's normal. Our aggravated assaults for... I'm giving up to date stats. Aggravated assaults are down 8%. Our property crimes are slightly down there. It's less than 1%. It's .53. However, in that property crimes realm, our residential burglaries are down 20% and our thefts from vehicles is down 25%. That number's been consistently down for past two months. That's from vehicles. And I hope to keep it that way. It's going pretty good in that area. The thing that's keeping our property crimes up are petty thefts. Petty thefts, anything theft over $950. Usually bicycles being stolen out of yards, lawnmowers, things of that nature. And that's up on the rise. So we just encourage people just to store their stuff away. It may be small to you, but when you do need it and you see it's gone, that's when it becomes a problem. So please store those small items away in the garage or in the house. People are taking those items. Our vehicle thefts, grand theft autos, are actually down 9%. So we did have an uptick in vehicles being stolen this month, past two weeks. We're going to keep... We have a unit under our apartment that deals with auto thefts. We're going to have that unit come to our station and do a survey and try to figure out why these auto thefts are up on the rise. Even though they are down 9%, that number should be down more, in our opinion, around this time of the year. We did have an incident of notice, two incidents I like to talk about. So first, last week, we had a vandalism event, or vandalism incident, up in Calva Estates. Seven vehicles were vandalized on one day, one incident. Fortunately for us, we had surveillance and we were able to catch the person the next day. That just goes to show how important surveillance helps with getting people off the streets. And fortunately for us, in this instance, the person was on parole and we were able to keep him in jail. He's supposed to go to court today or tomorrow. There is a zero-bail process in place now. If he was not on parole, we would have just wrote that sky ticket. He would have been out. So just understand the importance of having surveillance, some type of security. They do help with investigations to help us get people off the streets. It was important that we got this person the very next day because we knew he was... That person was just going to go do the exact same thing later on. Another incident we had a week or so ago was a murder. It's classified as a murder. Two individuals, they were acquaintance. They got into a disagreement and got to fighting each other. And in the course of that fight, someone was deceased. The other person was actually sent to the hospital with severe head injuries. Homicide is still investigating. They're trying to determine the reason for the death and the whole situation. It's still under active investigation. I can't speak too much on it, but it was a peculiar situation. It was weird. So the person that was sent to the hospital looked more injured than the person that was deceased. So we're still trying to figure out that cause of death.
So was that a shooting?
It was not a shooting. They just got to fighting and then...
Oh, hand to hand.
Well, yeah, hand to hand fighting and then one person is dead. Couple of events I want to talk about that we have coming up. First one is this Thursday. Nationwide, there's a drop cover and hold event. It's a, call it the Great Shakeout. It's just to simulate an earthquake and how prepared you are if an earthquake does occur. Again, that's Thursday, October 19th. It is scheduled for 10:19 AM nationwide. The next event we have is a prescription takeback day. We try to do this every six months. This will be October 28th. That's a Saturday. Between 10:00 and 2:00, you can come in front of the station. If you have prescription drugs that you like to drop off, we will safely take them away from you. There are some things we don't take, like sharps or needles. And there's no need to bring over the counter medication or vitamins. Just prescription medication that people are trying to discard. We're working with the DEA on this event. Again, this is something we try to do every six months. Again, that's October 28th between 10:00 and 2:00 PM. That same day, we're going to have our trunk or treat. Last year, we had it in conjunction with Parks and Recs at Farnsworth Park. They had a haunted house and then we were right outside passing out candy. So any child or adult that wants to come and get some free candy, come by and we will do that for you. That's going to be at 5, October 28th again. That's a Saturday between 5:00 PM and 8:00 PM. And the last event, and I'll talk more about this next month also, we're going to do our catalytic converter etching event. This is going to be Sunday, December 3rd. This is going to be a big one like we had before this January. It's going to be at Toyota Pasadena. It's going to be between 8:00 AM and 2:00 PM. However, this time, we're going to have it combined as a toy drive. It's not required that you bring a toy to get your vehicle etched. It's still free. However, any unwrapped toys will be highly appreciated. We're just going to kind of combine it and turn it into a toy drive. Again, I'll talk more about that next time and that's going to be Sunday, December 3rd between 8:00 and 2:00 PM. That's it. I just have one thing to talk about. This month marks my two years here at the station as a captain. Thank you, thank you. It's been a great two years and I hope for more. I'm not going anywhere, at least that I know of. But I really like to thank all of the support I've been given since I got here. It's been great. The town council, the chamber, Rotary, the library, Parks and Recs, our law enforcement partners, and of course, Fire. Thank you guys for all the support you have given me since I got here. This is something I could not have done without your support. And I'd like to thank the community for all of the support they've given me also. So thank you. I look forward to more years. And that's all I have. If there's any questions.
Billy. Malone.
Sorry, still the old school from the old system. Just to cover a quick question. When it comes to, a lot of people do hiking and stuff around here. When it comes to the national parks, especially off the 2 and stuff like that, you were talking about break-ins in cars. Where would somebody report an incident if it happens in the parking lot? And I'm saying this because it happened to me. We got back from the hike and they drilled... I think we were lucky. They drilled out locks on our door. So I think they were trying to steal the vehicle as opposed to a smash and grab. And I think they were spooked and left because nothing had been rifled through, just the door locks were drilled out.
Just a door damage, huh?
So depending on the value of what's happened, should you still report that? And then who would you report it to?
Absolutely.
When it comes to the parks? Like the national parks? Would that be the Forest?
It would be, but they're so busy. If it's Cheney Trail down into the parking lot down there, we cover that.
Yeah, this is actually off the 2, so it's kind of the backside of that.
I think that jurisdiction may be... I have to look at the map, but it could be Crescent Valley or Glendale.
But I would assume it's probably a similar sort of reporting process, right?
Yes. If it's an attempt, I will report it also.
Okay.
Even if something's not taken.
Okay. So you say that Crescent, maybe?
I would have to see exactly where it happened.
Yeah.
It could be Crescent Valley. Or it could be us. But if you call us, we'll find out for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Question? Okay, Councilmember Knapp.
Just a clarification. With the drug takeback day, can they bring over the counter expired medication as well?
I'm going to say yes. They're saying there's no need to bring it, but that can be discarded.
So you could just throw it away?
Yes. But, you know, if somebody brings it, we're not going to turn them away.
Okay.
Two quick clarifications. Toyota Pasadena, that's where the etching event is, you said?
Yes.
And there is a Sharps container outside of the sheriff's station, correct?
I have to double check. I have to double check because...
Okay.
Deb is saying yes.
Yes.
There is. Yes. Okay, great.
I was told it was removed, but...
Oh, okay.
Deb knows best, though, so...
And then lastly, I always want to be sure that people know you and I and the council are thinking about Charles Towns.
Yes, absolutely.
It's still under investigation. Any new news?
It is, and no news has been given to me.
Thank you.
Is there a possibility that the big sheriff is coming to see us anytime? Sheriff Luna?
The big sheriff, okay, all right. Yes, every... He knows this meeting occurs every third Tuesday of the month. His secretary has told me it goes on the calendar. I know some people that work closely with him and I keep saying, can you tell them to come here? So I think he's coming, I just don't know when, you know? So I'll stay on him. I'm really trying to get him to Christmas tree lighting event, Christmas tree lane lighting.
Okay, you want three years, right?
You're right, I do. You're right. You're right. I have a task now.
Okay, I'm only teasing, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
I won't say you called him big.
Okay.
No, I think you should. I think if he knows we called him Big Sheriff, maybe he'll come.
Maybe, maybe. He's watching right now, you know?
Okay, is there a question ready? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, we're going to have up next our CHP Officer Keller and Bay. Oh, just Bay, okay. Officer Keller, come on up. You've got to represent also.
We understand that the birth of a baby could really impair your ability to understand technology.
Exactly. They say pregnancy brain happens with the pregnant person, but I'm also, you know, a partner as well, so... So anyway, yes, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll just get to the traffic report before I say anything else that my partner might talk to me about. So, good evening, everybody. I'm Officer Brian Bay with the California Highway Patrol. I'm going to be presenting the September traffic crash statistics for the CHP. So in the month of September, the California Highway Patrol investigated three property damage-only traffic collisions. We also investigated 13 traffic collisions that resulted in injuries. Those injuries range from minor injuries to moderate. We also investigated four DUI traffic crashes and then also four hit-and-run traffic crashes with a total of 24 for the month. I would like to have a public service announcement regarding your vehicle. So what I've been seeing a lot on the freeways as well as our county roads is that a lot of cars have automatic headlight, you know, illumination. However, if you get into a rental car or kind of a car that you're not familiar with or if you hit a button and it goes into manual mode, then you're not, you know, driving with your headlights on. Or you have these clearance lights. And with a big event happening at the end of this month, that being trick or treating, we want to make sure everyone has their headlights fully illuminated on our streets over here as well as on our freeway. So please keep that in mind and maybe do a walk around if you're able to. Regarding one of those, I just wanted to kind of head back to one of the injury traffic crashes. One of those injury traffic crashes was a bicyclist in a vehicle as well. It occurred on Altadena Drive and Glen Rose Avenue. As far as I'm aware, the traffic crash just resulted in minor injuries and no one was transported. Councilmember Wong, I did receive your email about a possible pedestrian versus vehicle traffic crash that occurred this morning. I believe you said it was Woodbury Road and Fair Oaks. I looked into our system and I did not see a traffic crash that was generated. So I don't have any more information, but I will be attending the briefing tomorrow morning. I can ask the officer that was patrolling and get you more information regarding that. We did participate in the Walk to School event at the Odyssey Charter. Yeah, yeah. So that was a successful event and we were glad to be a part of that. We also want to advise that there are... And I've been gone for months, so I apologize if this has already been brought up, but there are at least two new stop signs, the first being Fair Oaks and Palm, as well as the second being Altadena and Holston. So please keep that in mind when you're traveling within the area that you might see myself or Officer Keller. Just making sure that we're all getting used to this new traffic signal and controlling device. Lastly, I just want to report that we've received multiple traffic complaints at Jackson Elementary regarding the parking as well as the just overall traffic behavior in the mornings as well as the afternoon pickups. So that's been brought to our attention and we just want to make sure that people understand that they can't leave their vehicle unattended, that you have to kind of make sure that you're pulling it within the coned area and then you're not obstructing the road in any way. Otherwise, we will have a conversation with that driver. That concludes my report. Are there any questions from the council?
I wanted to just make a comment. I wanted to thank you and Dorothy and Mark, all that were all helping Jackson with their problem and it got solved pretty fast, especially when Mark sent the picture of what the sign should be. That was very helpful. So thank you, guys.
Of course.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just wanted to also mention that I saw crosswalks are going in on Allen at Mendocino. So I saw that they were striping or starting to stripe today.
Starting to stripe, okay.
Yes, and just to reiterate, I want to thank you guys for participating in the largest Walk to School Day event in Altadena. And it was very amazing how you were able to really go with the flow and help our community be safe. So it was awesome. Thank you.
Of course.
And just to add on to that, several of the young boys were like, they are so cool. Thanks. Take it for what it's worth.
I won't let my head get too much bigger than what it is already.
Councilmember O'Malley.
It's not a question. I just wanted to congratulate you on your baby.
Oh, thank you very much.
And I wrote this down so I wouldn't mess it up. It gets better.
Oh. Definitely. I am trying to understand that and helping my partner understand that too, but she's been very helpful and good, so thank you very much. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Any other comedians? Any... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next month.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, we move on to our LA County Fire. And... Oh, here, okay. We have Battalion Chief Denerson. And... Oh, and Captain's here too.
Chief's right there.
Oh, chief, okay. Okay.
And Deb.
Yeah. They brought the whole team.
All right, Captain Williams, congratulations on your two years. We hope for many more also. And I do want to say, though, the collective teamwork and the collaboration between law enforcement, Fire Department is always refreshing here. We work well with them and we're fortunate to have them in the community and have that relationship or that teamwork. So appreciate it. Also want to take the opportunity to introduce Chief Denerson. Chief Denerson is one of our battalion chiefs out of the battalion here, Battalion 4. He's on the B shift here. He's one of the three battalion chiefs in our district here. It's Todd Denerson. So I just want to take the opportunity to acknowledge him here tonight and to introduce him if you haven't met him. So thanks, Todd, for coming. Sorry you guys don't have Maria tonight. Maria's teaching CERT in Aguado Se. So you got Todd and I. It takes two of us to do what she does, so... So Altadena Town Council, again, thanks for having us. This is your fire report for September of 2023. So total responses, 335. Patients receiving medical care was 263. Of those medical complaints, 216 of those were transported. There were no fires reported and there was two hazardous conditions. Both of those were power lines down and you had 10 traffic accidents reported in the district. So the safety tip of the month goes along the Halloween season or the trick or treat safety season. So ensure costumes are flame resistant. Stay away from open flames. Wear bright colored costumes and add reflective tape to costumes and trick or treat bags. Consider having your kids carry flashlights. Cross streets at corners only. Don't cross between parked cars. And keep your home well lit and clear from obstacles that could cause tripping hazards. I just want to talk about a meeting that we had last Wednesday night in the district here. It was a combined Altadena CERT and a Genesis Protect community meeting where we discussed the Genesis Protector, the Zone Haven program that we're in the process of rolling out and will roll out going into the next brush season along with Altadena CERT. At that meeting, 120 NOAA... At that meeting, 120 NOAA radios were handed out by Maria. And there will be additional opportunities for those who didn't get one, there will be additional opportunities to come here in the next couple of months. So if we have time, I would like to bring Deb up just to review some of the stuff that was talked about at Altadena CERT and talk about Altadena CERT a little bit. Thank you, appreciate your work with CERT.
I like it when the firemen stand behind me. Because of the efforts of Councilman, Councilmember Dot Wong, LA County Fire Maria Grykan, we, and then everybody, we had large email lists because the, we did the Tom Toms across Altadena to get everybody to come. We had 85 people here, we had 60 signups. And then Maria taught us about the evacuation zones, talked about Genesis as, as he has already told us. And also Chris Allender, the, another chief battalion for four, Battalion Four, was also here. He also added his expertise. When the Altadena group leaders came to that meeting, including like Ann Nolan from the Altadena Mapier Neighborhood Group and many others, people took information and then even emailed information after the meeting was over. So it was a pretty wide, widespread. And we also wanted to say that we made evacuation maps, they're in the back, that if you weren't at the meeting last week, you can pick them up. And also information about the NOAA radios if you weren't able to get one. Thank you so much.
Any questions for Deb?
Again, thanks, thanks to Deb for her work with CERT and the ongoing work in the community, appreciate it.
Deb, before you go, we have a question.
No, ditto. That was mine. That was it, like the, the collaboration happened from all of us really getting to know all the organizations and looking for dates and, you know.
Right, and Arthur Ballion helped us too from the LASD. He put out social media and he was here. I mean, it was really an effort so that we'd be more prepared for wildfire. Not that we'll ever be safe from it, but we'll be more prepared.
Yeah, and it did show how much the community wants information about fire safety, for sure. That's it.
Good, we'll continue along that same path as we work into the, the next brush season. We're looking fortunate this year with the, the rain that we had and, but this is still the time where we typically get our heavy winds, our San Ana winds, between now and January 1, we typically will get up eight to 10 probably wind events to varying degrees. So stay vigilant, there's still a lot of grass out there that's cured. Some of the, the larger fields have got a lot of moisture in them, but some of that grass could still burn. So still continue to be vigilant and I appreciate the extra time tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the battalion chief want to say something?
I'm good unless there's, in particular that you'd like to ask me. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, we appreciate you guys. Thank you. Okay. We move on to our special presentations, I'm going to turn it over, Victoria, you want to?
Sure, it's my pleasure and honor to welcome Dr. Blanco. Dr. Blanco is Acting Interim Superintendent for Pasadena Unified School District and she is here to deliver her 100-day plan.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Rennie, our data coordinator is passing out some materials to you and we do have more for the audience if you're interested. So first of all, I want to say honor and privilege to be serving as your interim superintendent. We have about 1,500 of Altadena students attending our schools and we're very proud of them. Altadena Arts Magnet is a national demonstration school. There's only 33 in the country and three in California, two, two of the three in California are in Pasadena Unified and one in your city. The very high standards for National Magnet Award and to become a demonstration site, so that's something you should be very proud of. I've been on a 100-day learning and listening tour, going to all of our schools in the morning and speaking with our staff, bringing them donuts and coffee and hearing what they feel are the strengths of PUSD, challenges and strategies for improvement. There is a card that you have in your materials that has a QR code. So you can use the QR code and give us feedback or we also take verbal feedback at the end of the presentation if you'd like to have anything on your mind that you want to share with us, Dr. Rennie, and also our communications officer, Hilda, right here, has also been very helpful in helping collect the data and record. We're going to use this information that we're gathering to complete our implementation plans for our strategic plan. Last year, we had five design teams that are outlined in the beginning of the document come together and we had some year one recommendations and we're in the process of creating the implementation plans. We want to take the information that we gather from across the city and from our staff and students and use that to influence the implementation plans. I also brought a copy of our new mission and vision and core values for you to see. The board adopted the mission and vision in June. You know, we really want our students to be able to compete in an ever-evolving world and become cultural competent citizens. And the vision is to really transform education so our students can be successful when they graduate. Values include cultural competency, equity, accountability, collaboration and fiscal responsibility. They're very similar to our former values, but we shortened them a little bit so we would be able to remember them. So some other exciting things that have been happening in the district include two rose princesses, one from Blair, one from Marshall. So that's always exciting for our students. We launched our Black Student Success Task Force and we are going to have, similar to the design teams and the strategic plan, committees from across our communities come together and look at how we can improve the experience for our black students. We know that they can do better and that we'd like to figure out like why that we see black students have higher suspension rates and are not as performing as high as we would like them to be. We're working with Dr. Kemi, Kemi Wilson, who has a lot of experience in this area and our AAPC. And so our teams are made up of an AAPC, that's our African American Parent Council, parent, a staff member and then a group of community partners, which includes teachers, classified, whoever signed up. So they just finished sorting out the committee, so I'm not sure who's on each committee yet, but I know it'll be a good cross-section of people from our three communities. In addition to that, I have brought you the enrollment guide, enrollment guide. It is very comprehensive, gives a description of each of our schools. The programs are highlighted at the schools and open enrollment will begin in January. There's a preliminary enrollment for neighborhood schools that begins in December. So if you know anyone else that this would be a valuable guide, please let us know and we will bring more to you. In addition to that, our student think tank from across all the high schools is getting ready to take a seat on the Board of Education. So that's pretty exciting, it's a project they've been working on for about a year. And they want to have a governance team at each high school and then they want to rotate the members that come to the board. And their plan is pretty comprehensive for high school students, they're going to make sure that each of the governance teams are up on what's going to be on the agendas and that they have some consensus before they come and make that representation. So we're really, you know, looking forward to working with all of our city and our city officials. So if there's anything you would like to share or have questions about, I'll do my best to answer them.
Thank you so much. I did want to, I think, make a bit of a comment and then just put a bug in your ear as it relates to the principal at Elliott. In talking to parents today who were notified that you would be here tonight at both Elliott and Altadena. You know, we've worked for the entirety of the Arts Magnet Grant from Altadena and now, you know, one year into the Elliott Arts Magnet Grant. And I know the intention was to hire someone as soon as possible, I think the recruitment was going to end on Friday and that has been extended. And much like the open superintendent role which has been put off until July 1st, I think that there would, the parents would like to see some consideration for the same sort of timeline for the principal. I'm not sure that the interim principal can stay longer than the five weeks that she committed to. But there is strong support for the assistant principal at Elliott and that she could perhaps fill the role of interim principal and that that might give her time to feel more comfortable with being new to our district and maybe perhaps throw her own hat in the ring. I think that something as a parent at both schools, I talked to teachers on Friday during parent-teacher conferences. And one of the things that has changed with the enrollment at Elliott this year was it was the largest cohort of Altadena students that came over. And a number of things have changed at Elliott as a result of that. One, because Altadena is a capturing kids' hearts school, those children that have come over to Elliott also embody that, that mentality. So the campus at Elliott is a happier, kinder place. And the teachers have reported that this sixth grade class is the most academically prepared that they've had in recent years and artistically prepared. And so I just want to, as a parent and as a council member and as the education committee chair, just make sure that we keep things stabilized as, as long as we can. So to put that bug in your ear, whatever ends up happening, I know will be the right decision, but I feel like it's a very hard time to hire a principal in the middle of a school year.
Thank you for, thank you for the feedback. So we did bring over a very experienced principal from an art school that was National Principal of the Year in her own district, retired. And so I know that she will be a great mentor to the vice principal and has also been a coach to Dr. Dana Hill. And so I, maybe she can encourage her to apply, but we don't want to hastily hire somebody because it has to be the right match for the, both schools. Because even if we don't go with convergence, we still want to keep the sister school opportunity going. And so we know that it has to be a very strong partnership between the two schools.
I did want to thank you for that because I know that the, the idea of them remaining sister schools and just you communicating that, I believe, to staff has gone a long way to quelling the nerves of parents who are a bit concerned about all the work sort of being for naught. So I appreciate that and I think that that's a great way for us to sort of go into the next evolution and I won't hit you.
Okay, I heard you say black students are achieving lower than the, all the other students, is that what I heard or is that what I?
Not in every school, but overall, we would like to see higher graduation rates and higher achievement.
Yeah, but my question is, is it lower than everyone else, is that what you're saying in relationship to all the other ethnicities that go to?
In some cases, yes.
In some cases, so in some cases, there are other ones that are lower?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to make, because it sounds like to me that you're saying black students are low achievers overall, that's what I heard.
No, I think that we have not been able to see the results that we know all of our students are capable in both black and Hispanic children. But this task force is focusing on the achievement gap that we're seeing in black students. And we plan to have another team in the spring, look at our Hispanic achievement. The reason we're waiting until the spring is we were able to buy some additional interventions in terms of our English Language Development Program and add some coaches. So it's not that we're seeing one group more important than another, it's just we're staging what we're doing for each of our interventions throughout.
Yeah, I was just interested in the achievement part, not one group over the, I mean, not one group being favored over the other, but the achievement part. Because so many times students are singled out and the, all the facts are not there. You take a specific small part and you highlight that part, but it's not the whole picture of what's really going on. Like now I hear that Hispanic students will be under the same program. So see, that gives me a different view on, on what's happening there. Okay.
We actually want to focus on all students that aren't achieving, but we are calling in some extra supports for the two populations.
Yeah, I appreciate that, I appreciate that, but thank you. And okay, we have Councilmember O'Malley, who's a teacher.
I am, at a public school. I just want to take a moment to just remind everybody here and everybody watching that Altadena residents are members of the Pasadena Unified School District. And as such, we could put our kids just about anywhere in the Pasadena Unified School District. I've got a six-year-old and when it came time to put my kid in school, my wife and I toured virtually or otherwise just about every place we could. And I just want to give a shout out to Willard, which is over on the east side by Guitar Center. It's an IB Magnet School and I'm going to give a shout out to Principal Ramella if you're, if you're watching, if you're watching. And the staff there, they're amazing. And I think as, as a general statement, this, this is just me soapboxing and I apologize for taking your time. I think a lot of Pasadena, Altadena residents undercut our public school system. And we have a lot of amazing teachers and we have a lot of amazing resources and we have a lot of amazing programs. Jackson's got their STEM program, Willard's got their IB, Altadena Arts is an amazing program. And I really want to encourage, whichever camera I'm looking in, all of our mothers and fathers and partners and guardians to really check out the Pasadena School District because it is, there's something there for everybody. And good luck, thank you for taking over and there's nothing I could do for you, but if there was, you let me know, okay?
Well, you could come and work for Pasadena Unified.
I've got tenure in Glendale.
But you're such a great advertisement.
Yeah, you know, I love my kid.
Thank you.
Sylvia?
I just want to say thank you for having this material. I'm going to kind of piggyback on what Chris says that Pasadena Unified has such amazing programs. I think everything a parent has is in this backyard of ours, between the dual immersion programs, the STEM programs. And I'm excited about what the schools are offering. It is heartbreaking, however, to see our schools closing and to see that the schools that we have had in Pasadena Unified are not replaced with a commercial business retail. They are replaced with charter schools. That is heartbreaking. And so I guess my question is, while I appreciate all this, is there something that is being worked on about how to retain students? To have them continue from the elementary to the middle to the high school?
Yes, well, the superintendent has had an enrollment committee since the beginning of the strategic plan design teams and the enrollment committee is continuing in terms of asset management. We are in consultation with a new legal counsel who is expert in asset. In terms of asset management, we are in consultation with a new legal counsel who is expert in asset management because we feel that there's many ways that we can use the land and properties that we own to increase revenue and take the conversation away from school consolidation and think about revenue enhancement. That is one of the bulleted items in the 100-day plan that I had down to complete before the 100 days was over.
I would like to piggyback on both of those. It comes down to messaging and PR. I mean, we do hear a lot of people in our community not necessarily saying the nicest things about PUSD and that goes through the gossip mill and people believe it. So the reason why I'm saying this right now is I trusted my only child with PUSD. She graduated this year. She's going to a good college, one of the best I could imagine on the East Coast. I have nothing but high praise for PUSD and I would trust them with my child and I recommend it for anybody. So please look into it if you can as your choice. Do not dismiss it. It has some of the best programs and probably the most diverse opportunities of education that you will find anywhere at any school. So thank you for taking care of my child.
Thank you for that. We have, we need to start featuring our graduates because I'm hearing so many wonderful stories about the careers that they are pursuing. And that is one of the communication strategies we want to work on. I would say an overwhelming theme that's come out with every school that we've visited is the teachers that have intergenerational families here. So there hasn't been a school that we, some of the schools we've gone to, the youngest staff member's been there for 10 years. And they will say, I went to school here. My children are going to school here. I met my spouse here. My parents went to school here. So there is all of this family commitment. It's like the spirit of USC Amatrosian, so it's very high spirit. And that is how it is throughout PUSD. Outside of the district boundaries on a national level and state level, we're very well-respected in education. So part of what we have to figure out in our marketing strategies is how we change the discourse. Because people would not stay in a school district and put their most precious commodity, their children, in the school district with them if it wasn't a great place. Fifty-two percent of our employees drive from outside the district boundaries. And they're bringing their children back here with them and are very committed to the district. So a lot of it is making sure that we say five positives to everyone negative. Of course, you know, it's public education system. It's an organization. There are negative things that happen in all organizations. But we just really have to have the positive outshining because I know it has to be true or people wouldn't be staying here as long as they do.
Okay, anymore? Okay, Victoria, okay, wrap it up.
I know I already wrapped. I know, I know, Chris. I wanted to piggyback sort of on what Sylvia had said as it relates to our programs. And I attended every single Altadena Arts Magnet tour for six years. And I've been on every Elliott tour for the last three years. And last week, we hosted both tours in the same week, which is a little unusual. We had 40 prospective families in each tour. What came up at both tours as a question and has been coming up since the inception of the Altadena Arts Magnet Grant is where do these children go for high school? And I want to impress that I don't want CS Arts and Laxa to be the two choices for parents whose children are looking for an arts conservatory experience in high school. And in talking to a Mirror mom today, I sort of understood that Mirror is moving towards media arts and away from fine arts. And many of our high schools have performing arts programs and very robust music programs, but we have almost virtually no fine arts. So I just think that we have to figure out before the grant at Elliott runs out what we're going to do with high school. Because the families that are coming in on these tours are folks from the industry, from the entertainment industry. And they want some sort of a conservatory experience for their kids. And we have this tendency to, I was talking to Shannon Mumalo, I just, you know, when they leave for CS Arts, we don't even track them anymore. They don't need to release from the district to go over there. And so we just lose kids at the high school level that are artists, that are looking for that kind of an arts supportive environment. So I know that it was, you know, on the former superintendent's mind and I know it's on your mind as well. I feel a quickening because my own child is in sixth grade at Elliott and he's going to need an arts program for high school and I'm going to be faced with this decision myself. So I'm just asking that we come up with something that allows a pathway because I don't think that children leaving the district is the only way. And I don't think that it works for most parents, right? Because we're not talking about things that are geographically central to where parents work. And I'm Italian and I'm going to hit you tonight, Chris. Arts in high school is important.
Thank you. We are always building the pathways, probably not fast enough for the parents who are wondering about them. But we do have plans to have a continuum.
Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you have any questions or you'd like me to come back or bring anyone with me to share more information, we'll be happy to come back.
Yes, Victoria will take care of, she's over our education committee and she will make that arrangement for us, right? Okay.
Thank you so much.
Go Wildcats.
Okay, we're going to move right along to our community reports. Can we have Chris Shepherd from the Department of Public Works? And who's that with you, Chris?
Good evening, council members. I also have Michelle Newsom with me from UWS. And we're going to provide you a quick update tonight on trash hauling services in Altadena and answer any questions or concerns you may have about services. It may be hard to believe, but it's been one year since we transitioned services to a new waste hauler. And although we are seeing fewer service-related requests, there have been some concerns that have been raised by the residents. And so I wanted to kind of go over some of those concerns with you tonight and what we're doing to address them. And just to remind all residents that if there are any concerns with trash services, you can always reach out to Public Works directly at 888 CLEAN LA and we'll work with our waste hauler, UWS, to help address any concerns you may have. So the first item that I wanted to talk about was the retro payment that came up recently with the October billing. Residents may have noticed on their bill, a retro payment, in most cases, is approximately $5. This is related to the annual rate adjustment that I mentioned at the June meeting. It's a rate adjustment that occurs every year. It's based on increases in fuel and labor and disposal costs. And it goes into effect July 1st. So in this case, notices went out in June about the rate increase, but the increase was not included until the October billing. And that bill included the retro payment for the month of July, August, and September. It was a $1.73 increase per month and the total is about $5 on your bill for the retro payment. Some people may have noticed a smaller payment if they have senior discount, maybe about $3.50 for the retro payment. So that explains the differences there. We do ask that if anyone has concerns about their billing, all billing is handled directly by UWS. So we do ask you to reach out to UWS directly to address any questions or concerns with billing. The next item I wanted to touch on, we heard reports of trash carts falling into the trucks and being dumped into the trucks by the trucks. And so we did confirm that that has happened in several instances. It's an issue with the mechanical mechanism on the trucks and being able to grip the carts. It's kind of a balance between gripping the carts too hard and crushing them and not dropping them in the truck. So UWS has been working on that with their trucks and making adjustments there to ensure that doesn't happen. I know there were some concerns with carts going missing and what to do about that. And so we do ask, if you have a video or photo of the cart falling into the truck, please just share that with UWS and they'll provide a replacement cart for you, no charge at all. If you're not sure what happened to your cart and it just went missing, because that does happen from time to time, someone scoops up a cart. We do ask the police report be filed and I know that seems like much, but there is an online system with the sheriff's department. It's the sheriff's online report tracking system that you can use to file a report and it'll generate a number which you can simply share with UWS and they'll provide you a replacement cart at no charge. Part of the reason for that is we have seen in other areas, sometimes people will request extra carts just to have them. And so we do ask you to go through that extra step to just confirm that your cart did in fact go missing. We've also heard several issues about recyclables being placed in the same truck as the trash and about leaking trucks and spills. And so we do investigate every request like that. We look into it, we work with UWS to address it, make sure it doesn't happen again. Make sure that any spills are cleaned up and those issues are addressed. So we just ask residents, again, to contact us, 888 CLEAN LA and let us know of any reports like that. We will work directly with the waste hauler to address those issues, get things cleaned up and taken care of to make sure that those aren't happening. And lastly, I wanted to provide a quick update on the bear cart rollout. So when I was back in June, we were just getting ready to roll that out. We began the distribution in August. And so I'm happy to report, we've been making really good progress with that. Over 400 sets of bear carts have been distributed to date. That's black, blue, and green carts, two residents that have requested them. We're continuing with the rollout. We're, again, prioritizing the areas with the highest incidence of bear activity. And so we're now moving into the last two areas within the bear zone. These are just east and just west of Eaton Canyon Park, Stone Hill Community, and Kinaloa Mesa. So the postcards just went out for those areas this past week to remind people of the ability to sign up, to visit the webpage and sign up for a cart. As soon as those deliveries are concluded in that area, we'll be making deliveries to anyone else who's already signed up for a cart. And then we'll be doing broader, more general outreach to remind everyone that the carts are available for anyone, anyone who needs them at no cost. So again, if you remember, we phased the rollout because of inventory. We wanted to make sure that we got enough inventory to the highest need areas that had the most bear activity. But there will be carts available to everyone who needs one that has experienced any type of bear issues. Again, just a reminder, if any residents have any concerns about trash hauling services, any issues with the trash hauler, with UWS, that you're not able to resolve or anything you want to report to us, 888 CLEAN LA, you can contact Public Works. We'll work with them to address any issues that you have. And with that, I just wanted to open it up to any questions you have for us or UWS. And again, we'll stick around for a bit afterwards as well if any residents have questions that they want to ask us.
Melissa?
Quickly, not as much of a question as a comment. One, thank you for all your support and especially UWS coming to all of these events. Thank you. We appreciate it. Also, there was a video on beautiful Altadena of a bear trying to enter your trash cans. And for one hour, it tried and did not succeed. And I could successfully say, in the meadows as well, it hasn't been able to get in our trash can. So thank you. We appreciate that. And just that's it. Thank you very much.
Speaking of bear carts, thank you for clarifying about the rollout. There are people who want an extra bear cart. Where does that fall in the timeline? Are you going to start serving outside of the zone? And then once that's done, will you go back for those extras or will you do that before that?
That would be in the last round. So we do know there are some people who have, say, like two black carts or two green carts. And now that we're putting food into the green cart, it's really important that folks get a green bear cart as well if they need one, if they need a bear cart. So afterwards, we'll be circling back. If folks want an additional cart, then they can sign up for that.
Great. And this might be more of a Michelle question. The trash that's on the street, the spills that you were mentioning, definitely report them. They'll come in. I do have multiple residents complaining that they have reported and it's still happening. Is there any discussion with the drivers? Is there, how does that process work and how can it be resolved if they've already complained a couple times?
There's always discussion with the drivers.
Could you step up to the mic for me? Thanks, sorry.
That's okay. But it's also more training that it sounds like we may have to do with the drivers. So if you can just email me the street so we can look into which driver it is. Sometimes we have a driver that has to fill in for another driver. It's no excuse, but yes, it's cause of probably more training and just discussion, you know, the drivers being more mindful and paying attention to what's happening as they're dumping the carts.
Great. And thank you again for returning that odd question I had. I know that sometimes these are isolated incidents, but I also know that there are definitely a number of residents complaining about consistent spills. And I'd be curious how that's resolved. So I'll try to get more specific.
Absolutely. And then I'll take that back to our team, make sure they, you know, talk to this with the drivers. And they have safety meetings every week, so I'll make sure that it's discussed this week on Friday.
As long as we're on that, just to be clear, because you know, I never talked in person. The question was, somebody was curious if there was a second small container coming that was specifically for meat and bones. As I understand, it's just that one small one. Where would they put meat and bones? Does that also go in that?
So it's the little green kitchen pail that's been handed out to everybody. So that essentially is for you to keep in your kitchen, to throw in those types of things and kind of keep there and then carry out to the green cart. It just kind of saves some time.
And it gets dumped in the green cart?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that. I think they were just confused. They thought a second one was coming for a specific stuff. All right.
I want to just kind of, on a little bit of those pails, we've gotten some calls that people hadn't received them. We show that we did, you know, completed the delivery. So if anybody hasn't, just have them email and just say, I didn't get my cart. We can have those dropped off daily. So anybody that you know that didn't receive one, just let us know. And we have plenty. So if anybody wants more than one, we'll be more than happy to get that for them.
Okay, Victoria.
Hold on, Billy, Billy, hold on one second. Matter of order here. Do we have any idea how the compliance is with the compostables? How are we doing with things going in the green bin and then going in the green bin?
That's more of your.
That's a great question. And we will be having to report that to the state in terms of compliance. We aren't quite there yet. Part of the, our reporting requirements will be to eventually do route reviews and tip lids basically on the cans and look at what's being put in there. Is there still too much food in the black? Is there contamination in the blue? What's being put in the green? And so there will come a time, it's, you know, a little bit of a soft rollout, but there will come a time where we're going to have to do those evaluations of the routes and there's going to have to be additional education and outreach to our residents to make sure that everyone is following the procedures, sorting properly, putting the right things in the right bins. So short answer, we don't know yet how we're doing on participation from residents, but we will be getting to a point where we're going to be checking on that.
Okay, Billy Muller?
One of the questions I hear when it comes to those small kitchen ones, where you take the bones and everything and put it into the green bins, is that it tells you to put it inside a plastic bag and then tie the plastic bag and put it into the green. But doesn't that cross-contaminate with the plastic? Should we recommend people don't do that?
With us, we're saying it's okay to use plastic bags because we also know that, you know, it could create odor from your cart.
And animals.
Yes. So we're okay with that because our facility that we're waiting for the last permit on with the City of LA to open our organics processing facility, the machinery that we have equipment is able to tear through all of those plastic bags and separate the plastic in the food waste. So we have implemented that with the contract with Altadena that you guys can use plastic bags or brown paper bags.
Thank you, because that gives me an answer to when people ask.
Any more questions? Okay.
I'm doing a lot of talking today and I apologize.
And you have students tomorrow, so.
I do have students tomorrow. I'm being evaluated too. So back when I had Athens, I could pretty much count on them to come to my trash can, dump my trash, and put my trash can back about where it was with the lid shut. And this is a first-world problem. I get it. But like, I don't understand, and I've heard a lot of complaints from a lot of my neighbors, is that, I don't know if it's the drivers or if it's the trash can or if it's the trucks, but there's a lot of dumping and then setting the trash cans down, like sometimes in the middle of the road, sometimes by the side of my car, always with the lid open. And I'm curious, once the rains start, I mean, I don't have a big problem. It's a pain for me to dump it, but I'm not elderly or disabled. Why?
I wish I had an answer for you this evening, but I don't. Again, I think it just goes with more training, that continuous training to the drivers. Be more mindful of, you know, in rush sometimes, you know, they want to get through that route and get it done because they got to get dumped, they got to get to the next commodity. There's different factors, but it's not an excuse by any means. There's different factors, but it's not an excuse by any means. So I will definitely relay that to the operations team and let them know, do more training, you know, site checks, that kind of stuff. So I apologize for that that's happening. And you're right, with the rain coming, that's an issue. I know a gentleman brought that up to me earlier, and especially for those that can't turn that cart over and empty it out. So I will pass that along.
Okay, I have a, just a quick comment. I notice, I live on a little tiny cul-de-sac, and I notice people park their cars, like, intentionally, in between the cans, and it makes it really hard for the trucks to go around and to pick them up. So what I started asking everyone to do on trash day is either park on one side or park in your driveway. And it really made a difference on how he put the can down and how much room he had to do it. So I, I mean, we can work with them a little bit, too. So...
Thank you for that.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you.
And Chris, go ahead.
I had one public comment submitted prior to this that they wanted read into the record, so I am going to. It says, "I believe that the community was under the impression that the contract with UWS was up for renewal," which it is not. Correct? Correct. But I am going to just read what this says. It says, "I and others in our neighborhood are firmly against the renewal of UWS and urge you to reject it. One, UWS drivers leave empty containers scattered like ten pins tipped over well onto the street, causing a traffic hazard, et cetera. Two, UWS often do not pick up containers despite repeated complaints, causing residents time and aggravation. Three, UWS trucks drop oil at prodigious rate and significant spills have been, haven't been fully cleaned up. Four, UWS containers are left with the lids open, allowing them to collect rainwater. This has occurred in the past, and they're almost impossible to drain. During the drought, this was less of a problem, but with the rainy weather ahead, it will shortly become one. I complained about this the first, I complained about the first of these matters last January, providing photographs, and was assured the driver training would be implemented. Nothing has changed, we're fed up. We didn't have these issues with Athens Waste. Please accept this as public input for Tuesday evening's meeting. Kind regards, Kenneth Bowman." And I wanted just to circle back, as it relates to the lids not being closed once the cans are dumped, I thought that when Matt had been here at a previous meeting, he said that that has something to do with how the cans are tipped into the trucks. And so that when they're put back on the street, there is no mechanism to flip that lid over, right? So I sort of understood that, like, the lids were not going to always be on the cans, right? Because this technology is not the same as the prior waste hauler's technology. So that's an issue that may just be continuing. But some of these others about the oil and the rest of it can be looked into. And I will forward this to all of you, so you have it.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. And if people have more questions regarding trash, they're going to stay, hang around a little bit? Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to our Parks and Rec, Guillermo Portillo?
Portillo.
Portillo. And just so it knows, if you have a public comment, you need to fill out a card, and we do public comment toward the end of the agenda.
All right, everybody, just to give everyone a quick update, this past month, we actually had our Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. So actually, we had it at Loma Alta on the 29th of September. It was pretty great. We had a live band, so some of you guys have seen Flamenco Souls, they performed. We had pan dulce, chicharrón, which is pork rinds, mochata, hot chocolate. We also had face painting. So thank you for those that came out. And then also coming up with a couple of other events we do have coming up. October 26, we have the Lights On After School. That's basically a national event where all of the after-school programs, either at park sites or at school sites, they basically put on a light, a blue light, outside of their building to symbolize that we have an after-school program, in part because a lot of kids aren't aware where these programs are on that day. It helps illuminate that. So if you pass by a school, you pass by a park, and you see those lights, that's basically signifying that there is an after-school program for your kid there. So we're going to do a special activity that day during after-school program. We're going to have a special art instructor that day, and then the teens are going to actually have a cooking class that day, just as a special activity. And then youth basketball, we have our open registration, so that's going to be taking place for the winter, starting January 2nd. So we have registration open. I left a couple of flyers back there. Another event we are going to be having that's pretty big is our Dia de los Muertos. That's going to be on November 1st from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. That's going to be at Loma Alta. We're going to be actually decorating right at the entrance of our main building, a bunch of orange flowers. We're going to be doing an altar. So it's going to look really beautiful. We're contracting somebody to help us decorate the entire area. We're going to actually see if we can get a mariachi and also an Aztec dance performance, food tasting, and then they're also going to be printing out photos in case you guys don't bring any photos. But the holiday is more just to honor the dead as they're crossing through for that day. And then coming up too, in about two weeks, we have our Trick or Treat Village. So Loma Alta is going to be hosting it during the farmer's market from 5:30 to 8:30 on October 27th. And then Farnsworth, we're going to be hosting it the day after. So Farnsworth is actually going to be hosting a haunted house. So the Rotary Club is going to be nice enough to actually donate candy, on top of the candy we're going to be purchasing that day. And then last but not least, this Saturday, we're actually going to have one of the biggest events. The, well, not Parks and Rec, but the Department of Mental Health actually partnered with us. So they're contracting out almost everybody that we use for Parks After Dark to come out that event. So they're going to have Michael Haggins, they're going to be buying food for 500 people, they're going to have about 40-plus resource vendors, they're going to have our bike station, so we're going to have our bike safety course, skate site. So if you guys came out to any of our Parks After Dark, we're based, think of it as like a combination of all those days into one. So it's going to be a really massive event. I have a bunch of flyers out there, and I'll make sure to send that out to all of you, so you guys can help us market it, because this Saturday is going to be one of the bigger events. So that takes place from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. This Saturday. Mm-hmm. Yeah. So yeah, that's about it.
Thank you. I just got your flyer on my email, too. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, we're going to move on to the library. Nikki Winslow.
Good evening, council members, members of the community, and those watching from home. Thank you for the time to update you tonight. So in competition with Captain Williams, on November 4th, I will be celebrating my four-year anniversary with the Altadena Library District. I would also like to thank the Town Council, Chamber, Historical Society Heritage, and all of the very passionate community members that love their libraries. So it's been a great four years. Can't believe it's been four years. So in terms of upcoming closure, we're going to be closed for Veterans Day, which is Saturday, November 11th. This means that Second Saturday will be on Friday, November the 10th instead. I'm going to be covering that later, but thought I'd point that out. I usually forget to remind everyone that our Board of Trustees meet on the fourth Monday of each month at 5:00 PM. So that will be this coming Monday at 5:00 o'clock. You can attend in person at the main library, or watch our livestream on our YouTube channel. So dun, dun, duh. The library materials vending machines have officially arrived. Very excited about that. It's been a couple of years in the making. Thanks to funding we got from the state, California State Library, that was put in the budget by Assembly Member Holden, paid for these vending machines as we're expanding our footprint across the community. Staff are busy stocking them with high-demand items in anticipation of our ribbon cutting this coming Friday at Prime Pizza at 3:00 PM. Big thanks to Zach Fishman, the owner of Prime Pizza, for his enthusiastic welcome to bring one of our vending machines to his location, as well as my IT and technical services manager, David Zierba, for making it happen. These are the first vending machines of their kind in Southern California. So, yeah, it's amazing. So we're still looking for another location for our second machine. Right now, it's currently going to be at the main library outside the east entrance, but hope to see all of you on Friday at 3:00. So in terms of building project updates, we're continuing to work with our LA County Planner to get the conditional use permit approved. We're planning to present to the Land Use Committee, as well as the full council, in November. We're also facing some time-restraint challenges with the $7.5 million grant that we got from California State Library, but I am in communication with the state librarian right now to see what we can do about getting some type of extension on that grant. We're also still busy looking for an alternate site for the closure of the main library. Thank you to Doug for his guidance and persistence, as we've been continuing to look all throughout the community. As I mentioned earlier, our next Second Saturday concert will be on the Second Friday in November, which is the 10th at 7:00 PM. Come join us and enjoy the music of Kira and the Three Majors. So we're actually in the middle of the In-N-Out Cover-to-Cover Club. This has started running two Saturdays ago on October 7th through Saturday, November 18th. So basically, all children ages 4 to 12, by reading five books or 300 minutes, can earn a certificate for free burgers. You wouldn't believe how popular this program is, honestly. Kids can earn up to three certificates as well, so spread the word. So in terms of our Altadena Poets Laureate Program, they're right now collecting submissions for their poetry anthology that will publish next year. The submission deadline is fast approaching on October 31st, so if you know any local poets that would like to see their work published, please encourage them to visit the website, which is altadina-poetryreview.com. They have planned several events throughout the next several months as well. Next one coming up on Tuesday, the 24th, at 6:00 PM at the main library. This one's called Writing the Octavia Butler Poem Honoring an Altadena/Pasadena Daughter of the Land Workshop with Shonda Buchanan. In addition to that, they have another concurrent program that's running right now, which is Ode to the Land, where they're bringing together seniors as well as high school students to honor poetry and work together. This next one will be on Saturday, the 28th, at 11:00 at the main library, and its home is where the art is workshop with Bonnie Kaplan. All right, some of our other amazing upcoming programs. This coming Saturday, the 21st, at 11:00, we'll have an art workshop, which is creating unique stamped jewelry. In partnership with Huntington Health, we're going to be doing a blood drive on Friday and Saturday, October 27th and 28th at 9:00 AM. Registration recommended, so please set an appointment and save a life. Friday, October 27th, we're going to also be featuring the Bob Baker Halloween Spooktacular, so if you like puppets, and amazing programming coming up at 7:00 PM, and I believe that's on the main floor at the library. So we also have Dia de los Muertos right around the corner. We're going to be having a Donza Azteca performance coming up at the Bob Lucas Library on Monday, October 30th at 4:00 PM. And in addition to that, we're going to be hosting a Dia de los Muertos Public Afrenda at both library locations. We are encouraging people to bring in photos of their loved ones that have passed on, and you can put those on the afrenda at either library location. Couple more programs, just to mention before the next time you'll see me. Saturday, November 4th, we're going to have a program at the Altadena Community Gardener, one of our great partners, called Plants as Medicine: Herbal Foods and Tonics for Digestive Health. And then Wednesday, November 8th, from 3:30 to 4:30, we're bringing back Ben Hale, who will do Native American Dance and Culture, who's amazing. If you haven't, didn't go to the last program we offered, I'd highly recommend. Couple other things before I run. Although I know we're going to get public comment, we're also hosting the Altadena Town Council Candidate Forum at the main library this coming Thursday evening at 6:00. So love to see all of you there. And a little bit of a spoiler, we're going to be launching our Homebound Services for patrons that aren't able to come into the library and want to request items, get some readers advisory, and have their items delivered to their homes sometime in November. So I'll have more information about that next month, but thought I would just put it out there to keep an eye out for it. So thank you so much for your time. Happy to answer any questions.
First of all, thank you. Especially excited to see the Bob Lucas Library in an area that's often neglected or forgotten, the West Side. On that, I love that you have the incredible...
Vending machines.
Vending machines.
Oh, yeah.
I would more love it if one of them found their way to the West Side. I think those neighbors deserve something like that, but again, I appreciate what's happening with Bob Lucas, and I hope it stays on track.
Oh, yeah, definitely. I've been exploring some locations on the West Side, so hoping to make that happen.
Man, I just can't stop tonight. I too appreciate all the work that's going into Bob Lucas, and I hope we can see that through. I do have a question, though, because my kid loves to read, but he doesn't eat meat. So is there an alternative to the free burger?
I really don't know. That's a great question.
Isn't it, though?
Yeah. Why don't you shoot me an email, and I'll find out?
Yeah?
Because he deserves a shake, in my opinion.
Like, he loves, he loves, like, vanilla malts shakes, something like that, yeah?
Yeah, I haven't looked at the coupon, so...
I'll email you.
Okay, let me know.
You can, how do you get a burger without the meat? That's a cheese, that's a grilled cheese.
Thank you, Veronica. The vegetarian option of burger, yeah.
Just looking at it, all I'm saying.
Okay, and I just want to, is there... Okay, I just want to emphasize how important it is for the Bob Lucas Library to be done in a timely manner, just like we planned.
Yeah.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on. The Chamber of Commerce, I don't see Judy Matthews. Is there anybody here from the chamber? Okay, we're going to move on, then. Okay? We're going to move on to the election. And I am chair of the Election Committee, and so the Election Committee met, we met on October 11th, and it consists of, our committee is Doug Cauliflower, Karen Gibson, Antonio Bersera, Connor Chipola, and myself. So we met, the election, actually, the application process closed on the 13th at 5:00. We picked up 13 applications for the eight seats that are open. So tonight, we're going to hear from those 13 applicants, and we're going to hear their statements. And then just some important dates, just so I get this in. Okay, we heard the candidate statement, the candidate forum, hosted by MBBA, is this 19th, right? 19th at the Altadena Library at 6:00 PM. And we like to hear all the, from the candidates then, that evening. And then we have our election, which will be the 4th and the 7th. And just so that this is clear, on the 4th is a Saturday, and we will have it at three locations. We have the main library, Bob Lucas, and Prime Pizza. On the 7th is a Thursday, we only have it at the main library that day. So just to get that clear. Okay, and we are, we will be asking for people to help sit at the polls to take in the ballots. So, okay, we're going to move on and get the candidate statements going, and I'd like to go by census tract, okay? So we're going to start, and I'm going to...
Go in reverse census tract order? Oh, no.
You're going to get me confused.
Because I go first for everything, always. I'm happy to go first.
Okay, we're going to do 4601, Victoria Knapp. I'm sorry.
Do you want me to get up and go?
Yes, yes, yes. Come on, we're, we need to do this.
Okay, I'm going.
Okay. Then next is going to be Kim Yi. Is Kim here? Okay, so be ready after Victoria finishes. And then after that will be Isis Moden. Okay? Go ahead.
Are you ready? Good evening, everyone. I'm Victo, whoa, I can't get used to this either. I'm Victoria Knapp. I'm running for reelection in census tract 4601. Over the last six years, I've prided myself on connecting with residents, understanding the many issues they face, and keeping them informed about our community, alerting them to the planned projects that may affect them, such as road closures, fires, accidents, wildlife. I've worked diligently to build strong working relationships with many county personnel, I've worked diligently to build strong working relationships with many county personnel, which is tremendously helpful in getting questions answered and problems resolved. And because of my background in business sales, I assist as many small business owners in navigating the labyrinth of county departments and resolving their issues as often as possible. Most recently, I worked with the Department of Public Works to evaluate the intersection of Altadena Drive and Holliston, which posed safety concerns not only because of speeding, but specifically for pedestrians trying to cross Altadena Drive. This was before the tragic fatality at Holliston and Mendocino. The traffic study resulted in the installation of a four-way stop, the addition of marked crosswalks, and new pavement striping. Speeding has been reduced along the corridor between Allen and Lake as a result. I've proven myself to be involved by my attendance at almost every town council and the Anduse Committee meeting. I make it a point to work alongside and support council members and other tracts, because I believe that our partnerships strengthen the community. In my role as vice chair, I also attend monthly executive committee meetings, prepare the monthly town council agenda, and collaborate in the planning of the town council's annual retreat. I'm trusted not only for my unbiased approach to problem solving, but because I can be counted on to follow up and follow through. I routinely strategize with leaders throughout our community and consider myself a partner to our library district, the Chamber of Commerce, the Sheriff and CHP stations, the Rotary Club, and to our many public schools. It is because of issues I know we will be facing in Altadena in the near term that I am running for reelection, so that I may see them through and continue my stewardship of this great town. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Good job. After Kim, it's Chris Price, and then William Malone. Two minutes. She's, okay, and you're running for 4602.
Yeah.
Yes. Just push him one.
There you go.
All right. Hi, my name is Kim Yu. I've been an Altadena resident since 2018. My family lives by Hyvee and Mariposa, and our two boys currently attend Pasadena Waldorf School right down the street. I truly believe that every Altadena resident deserves a safe, healthy, and clean city to live and thrive in, and I'm here to help make an impact for my community. I've had over 18 years of experience in public safety and environmental protection, two years with the LA County Department of Public Works and their environmental programs, and over 16 and 1/2 years with the Pasadena Fire Department as their hazardous materials inspector and specialist. Over those 18 years, I've had extensive experience working alongside some of the very community partner agencies that we've heard tonight, such as the LA County Sheriff's Department, CHP, LA County Fire Department, Pasadena Unified, and, yeah. I am extremely dedicated to serving the public and am passionate in making a positive impact in people's lives. My years of experience in keeping the public safe, combined with my dedication and passion to helping my community, makes me the advocate you want to make your beautiful Pasadena safe. I ask for the chance to help and advocate on behalf of our residents to promote a safe, clean, and healthy Altadena. Thank you very much.
No, Chris. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, should we read his statement? Okay.
May I take this?
Oh, okay. Oh, it's really short.
This is from Chris Price. I'm applying to be a member of the Altadena Town Council. I have lived in Altadena since 1987. In Census Tract 4602, I am a retired elementary school teacher who taught in El Monte City School District for 29 years. I am a founding member of the Mount Low Chamber Players, which performs free concerts in Altadena, often in the Altadena Library or at the Altadena Community Church. These concerts are largely supported by Altadena residents. I want to become more involved in our community and decisions on our areas, such as land use and traffic safety. Thank you, Chris.
Okay. William Malone.
Who's next?
Billy, 4602.
And then Isis?
And then Isis.
She says William, but everybody knows me as Billy.
It says William.
Several years ago, I didn't know how to get involved in the community and what can I do, and I came here, and I've been here for 18 years, and I'd never been involved in any community kind of political aspects at all. And I stood at this podium, and my vocal cords ruptured just before, and I couldn't speak a word. So I feel for everyone that's trying it for the first time now, and speaking and everything else. I had to stand here silent, in silence, having somebody read my statement for me. Since then, I've tried to get involved as much as I can, and I realize that whether we win or lose in this election, it doesn't really matter, and it shouldn't matter regarding the involvement you want to give to your community. And I always say, if you really want to know what somebody, how committed somebody is to what they say they're going to do in any kind of election, don't ask them what they're going to do when they win, ask them what they do when they lose. Because if they're determined to give back, they're going to give back regardless. And I hand out an olive branch to anyone that's running right now. Whether I win or lose, please come, I'm happy to share my knowledge and work with you for the better of my community, because it's about all of us, it's not about me. Since being on the council, I've actually got involved. I've been the chair, I've been the corresponding secretary. I was the chair during COVID, which was quite a challenge, because everybody was home knowing what was wrong with the city. I led a charge for Save the Sheriff Station, Save the Humane Society Contract. I led the volunteers for the bank, for the phone bank, for the Bobcat Fire. I've been on the Chamber of Commerce, I've been president of the Chamber of Commerce. Anyway, my cellphone number, 626-893-0787. I'm always approachable, whatever you need, please don't be shy. I'm part of the community. That's it.
Thank you, Billy. Okay, Iris Molden.
Isis.
Isis. Sorry.
And then who's next?
4610. Yeah. And then we're going to have Japhina Munson for 4610.
Hi, my name is Isis Molden, and I'm running for 4610. And I had a speech prepared, but I went over it with my mom before I came here, and she told me I talked too fast, so I'm going to just try and talk from the heart. But I'm from Altadena, born and raised here, and I went to Pasadena area high schools, elementary and middle schools, and went to school out of state and came back, and I'm so fortunate to be able to move back to the town that I grew up in. Since then, I've joined pretty much every committee you guys have to offer at the Altadena Town Council, and Mr. Arzing can attest that I'm probably doing too much. But the committee that I'm most excited about is the internship program that we participated in during the summer, and would like to expand it during the fall and spring. And I was encouraged to run for a town council, to hopefully do it at a more official level. But if I don't win, thank you for your speech. I do continue to bug all of you guys and get the program off the ground. I'm communicating with a bunch of principals that are trying to connect the high schoolers with the elementary school students with reading and storytime and tutoring, and I'd like to see that through with your support. And I'd also like to get some of the students involved in our election, this upcoming election and future elections, and I know a lot of them have expressed interest in that. And I just think that going to Pasadena High School, I had a lot of encouragement, and I'd like to extend that to our upcoming classes and future generations. Thank you.
My name is Japhina Munson, and I am running for 4610. And I've been a part of this community for almost 25 years. I was originally born and raised in Portland, Oregon, so there is something about Altadena that is very homelike, not quite as fast-paced and so forth. But I've been very involved in the community since I've been here, and raised two boys here in this community, and have thought about running for council years back, but it was time to be involved with the children and the schools. I've been a volunteer with the Sheriff's Station in many capacities, and a street captain, and been, again, in the school. My background is communications and educational leadership. So I've watched, I've done homeschooling, I've been in the public schools with my children, I've been in charter schools, and I've seen everything from A to Z. I've been very, very involved. I believe that community is like family, and the best way to bring a community together is to treat one another like family and get to really know each other. We're all different, yet we are the same. And when we take that time to get to know our neighbors, we can, we can help one another better. And I see the card coming up. No, that's fine. Anyway, there will be other times, but thank you for your time. And to me, community is family.
Oh, council member Wong, Census Tract 460301.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Hello, everybody. If you don't know, my name is Dorothy Wong, and I can't believe it, but this is the completion of my third term on the town council, and I couldn't help myself. I love Altadena. I love getting involved in all the good chaos of our community. And it's just, here I am, and I'm be honored, privileged. I've learned so much, and I continue to learn, and that's a real gift. I started out really as an activist or an advocate, and it's like, slow your roll. But at the same time, our diversity is our strength. We are stronger, building resilience, coming together to find solutions. And I am very proud to have been partnering with so many amazing people and organizations here. I remember back in the day, we did a Gathering for Nature Wildlife. We got together because the cougar was out there loving the goats, and we had to solve those problems. So I am honored, and I hope, oops, sorry, I'm getting nervous now. But anyway, basically, I've learned a lot. Legislation has been amazing, and really, when the community got empowered with our Traffic Safety and Mobility Committee, that's when everything really started to move. So stronger together, two more years.
Oh, thank you. John Carmody.
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 Okay, like harmony, but harmony. Okay, 4603-02. Point 02.
Hello, my name is John Carmody, and I'm running to represent the people of Census Tract 4603.02. First, I wanted to say thank you for the opportunity to run for a seat in the town council. It has been an honor and a privilege to be on the Land Use Committee for the past two years, and hopefully, if I'm elected, I can continue to work on the town council. I've learned a lot sitting on the Land Use Committee and quickly realized that it takes more than one person to make change happen. It's a community effort. It's about being the listener and that voice for the people that I have the privilege to represent. While in the Land Use Committee, I was tasked with many different initiatives, whether it was voting on housing projects, or listened to small business owners present their vision. But the one thing that really informed me and made me more aware was canvassing for my area on an important issue that came about. That made all the work we do extremely personal. It was that opportunity that allowed me to truly get to know the people that I represent. I spoke to many people that day, from all walks of life, different backgrounds and perspectives. I know it's possible to respect and honor that history of our community, while at the same time to look at this and see the possibilities of what we can be. I've also volunteered at the polling station at last year's election, as well as helping Nick and his amazing team organize this year's Pride Festival, with such an amazing support from the entire community. Because at the end of the day, that's what it's all about, is community and a sense of belonging. Embracing and celebrating our differences makes us a stronger community. The last few years have been challenging for everyone. It was because of this I felt compelled to get involved at the local level, and it's at the local level that change can be made, both for residents as well as small businesses. Let me end by saying, I'm sorry, we should honor the past, learn from the past, to work alongside each other, both with the county and a community organization, so we can move forward, investing in our futures, to make Altadena a safe and vibrant place, filled with opportunities for everyone to call this wonderful place home. Let me end by saying that every day, I consider myself the luckiest guy, that I have found this incredible community with the kindest neighbors, and all the while, being with my wonderful husband by my side. That is what I want to focus on. It's the feeling of a true neighborhood and community, which is why I'm ultimately running for town council. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
I try.
Darlene Green, 4603.02. Oh, God. Okay.
Good evening. Thank you, town council, for giving me another opportunity to run. I ran against Mr. Chris, and the incomparable Sandra Thomas, I'm glad I'm not running against her tonight. So what I'll say is, you made a great statement, sir, about when you don't win, what you do. I reached out to Chris, Nick, and a couple other people to help, but then I got really sick. And one thing I would like to bring to the council, if I am elected, is to let people know how important health is and self-checks. Thank God, I beat it. I'm back this year, ready to run again. I think I bring a great experience. I have a legal background. I work with the Los Angeles Homeless Services Authority as a director, working with Mayor Karen Bass on her initiative for Inside Safe. So I believe I could bring that, the homeless population is increasing here, and I would like to bring that knowledge to the council. And so I'm looking forward to another chance to come and make a difference. My background in legal, being able to help out with the Legislative Affairs Committee that we hope we get to start, I think that I can do a lot to make Altadena better. I volunteer currently with the churches, teaching kids about, you know, how to interview for jobs. I started a whole lot of things where they have suits and things for interviews. So I know I can make a difference here. I'm looking for an opportunity to do that. Thank you, Chris, for all the times hitting me back when I emailed you. And so I'm looking forward to making Altadena even greater. I think we can do this, so let's go. Thank you so much.
Okay, Shay Shay Yancy, 4603.02. The best Census Tract.
It's funnier than what it says.
No, it doesn't.
Good evening, everyone. Franklin D. Roosevelt once said, "Be sincere, be brief, be seated." So with that said, my name is Shay Shay Yancy. I'm a proud Altadenian of 65 years plus, and I wouldn't live anywhere else. Since you have or will read my Statement of Qualifications online, I'll just say this tonight. Since my retirement in corporate America, I have both the desire and the time to serve my community. I wish to serve on the Altadena Town Council in order to represent the constituents in my Census Tract 4603, and to bring their concerns to the table. I'm motivated by compassion and empathy for my community, the safety of our streets, our children, our elderly, and differently disabled, and the arts and crafts community. A town council member can be a challenging position, but I have no doubt my high energy, passion, and determination will prove me equal in every regard to this and those challenges as they arise. So again, I hope to be working with you in the near future, and I thank you so much for this time.
Okay, we have Pat Sutherland, 4611. And next on deck is Regina Williams, Dr. Williams Wilkins. Wilkins. Oh, well, you have bad handwriting. Doesn't it look like Wilkins? Okay, sorry.
I wrote "Stay on topic" at the top of my page because I find it hard time to do that, so I'm going to try and read this, folks. I'm a 30-year resident of Altadena. Before becoming a council member in 2014, I had careers in sales and financial management with major department stores and banks, which has been very valuable to me in the work that we do here. I originally joined the council after volunteering at an ATC election site and learning when I sat there talking with people that came to vote and the council members that were also sitting with me, that I knew very little about Altadena at that time. I lived just above Woodbury, west of Lake, and when I would go to work in Los Angeles or Beverly Hills, I left, I left the world. And I never got, when I got home, I never really got any further up the hill in Altadena to find out what was really here available. Good communication is essential for a council member. I communicate regularly to residents of Census Track 4611 to share results of the monthly ATC meetings and other informations of interest. I have made presentations about the town council to community organizations, from Cub Scouts to seniors. You may have, not you folks, because I've met all of you, but you may have seen me walking in the neighborhood with my little dog in the morning. Sorry for the barking. I've served on several committees since joining the council. In doing so, I have interfaced with multiple county departments, including Supervisor Barker's Office, Public Works, Public Safety Representatives, and I'm currently working on a committee to update the council website. The most important thing that a council member can do for his or her residence is to listen, L-I-S-T-E-N capital letters. That's the reason that God gave us two ears and one mouth. And that is what I intend to do for the next two years. I am running unopposed, but I still have to have a, a minimum of votes, so, no, you people, I don't think it's anyone in my Census Track, but, okay.
How about just Regi?
It comes Regi.
You are in Census Track 4612.
Reginald, the D is silent. I don't really think about my name a lot. Reginald, D is silent, so people say Reginald without a D. But I'm not very silent, as you can say. But I have, I can read the full remarks, or I can read the, a brief remarks. What would you prefer? The brief, I mean, basically, when I first, Regi Wilkins, Altadena ever since 2000, we bought our first house in 2000, two kids, public schools all the way through, ready for reelection. And when I first ran back in 2012, I was drafted by neighbors to run. I didn't run around. One of them is actually here today. I won't point him out. But it's like, okay, okay, I'll do it at the last minute. And here it is, you know, years later, I've been drafted again. I mean, I, I love doing it, but it's always hard when you're working full-time and you've got all sorts of crazy hobbies like astronomy, photography, to drag yourself out. But I've never, I'm always happy when I leave these meetings. I think we do good stuff. And the reason why I did run is, you know, it's, it's totally duties. It's not rewards. It's, we can make, Altadena can be a microcosm of making America better, because we're beautiful Altadena. We have problems, but we work on them. We make them better. And James Baldwin told us way back in college that if America can make it work, the world can work. And if Altadena can make it work, we can show America. And that motivates me to come to these meetings and go, oh, oh, oh. But that doesn't mean you shouldn't like me, you know? Do I represent my Census Track? They keep on telling me to run, so I think they think I do. Do I represent Altadena? I go to a hardware store, I support our businesses. I think I do a pretty good job. How about California? Well, who knows, right? But I think I'm doing a pretty good job. I sit on as few committees as I can, a few committees as possible, and farm those off, so I keep my love going. But I think you'd be pleased with me a third term. If not, you know, I sure have a great opponent. I'd love to have them join as well, because there's things I could do besides this. But I will accept your vote if you so wish to give it to me.
Thank you.
Let's make Altadena beautiful, and it's America and the world. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We have Juliette Camoguri.
Camoguer.
Camoguer. Oh, French.
I'm running for 4612. Hello, everybody. My name is Juliette Camoguer. I live on Pepper Drive, the famous Halloween trick-or-treating street. And I was here with my husband, Joakim, and my son Mohave, but they went home. But my daughter Paloma is still here. She's eight years old. And we moved here to be closer to the kids' school, to the Pasadena Waldorf School. We moved here in 2020. And quickly, the reason we moved here, we realized this was going to be the place where we bought our forever home and raised our family. And we just fell in love with Altadena. We are both musicians. And my husband and I have deep roots here in Southern California. We were both born at Cedar Sinai. My father's born in Los Angeles. My husband's parents are born in Los Angeles. My mom was born in Mexico, so even though the French last name, I'm actually Mexican. Hablo español. Y si quieres llamarme, tienes una pregunta, llámame. So we have a really deep feeling of connection to the Los Angeles area. I was raised in Brentwood, and though my father passed away six years ago, my mom still lives in the same home that I was raised in. And I've watched the West Side completely change over the last 45 years and become something totally unrecognizable. So as I'm thinking about the next generation and this community, thank you, I just wanted to know, I wonder what do we want to see? What do we want to see in 10, 20, 30 years? What do you want it to look like here? What do we want it to feel like as more businesses move in? And I feel like it's my duty to protect this spectacular wilderness that we're so fortunate to have and to help small businesses. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I, I love the hardware store. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We have our wonderful Sylvia Vega, 4613.
Good evening. My name is Sylvia Vega, and I am running for reelection for Census Track 4613. It has been a privilege to represent our Census Track for the last 10 years. It's gone so fast, and the land use committee for the last 11. Over the last 11 years, my work here, serving on both the town council and land use, has been productive, fulfilling, and certainly educational. I've worked hard canvassing the neighbors of 4613 to obtain feedback and opinions from the neighbors for the projects that have come up in our Census Track, whether it's been a banquet hall, applying for an alcohol license, historic Highlands designation to front yard, side yard setbacks for private residences. Meeting and connecting with neighbors is my favorite part of this role. Listening to their feedback regarding the projects being voted on and sharing their opinions with the council and county is crucial. Several years ago, we had a problematic house in our Census Track with drug use, and the residents of that home committing burglaries in our Census Track. I set up a town meeting with the captain of the Altadena Sheriff's Department and the immediate neighbors living around this problematic house. It was through this effort that the sheriffs were able to build an effective case against the owner and resolve the matter to the appreciation and satisfaction to the neighbors. I've been on the election, I've been the election chair, served on the education committee, and hope to serve on the executive committee in the future. I love living here. I love working here. And I hope to have the opportunity to continue to serve my constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, did I miss anybody? I think that's it. Okay. No. Okay, so those are our candidates, and we can hear them again at the library on the 19th. So I'll be there, and I hope everyone else will be also. So that ends our election candidate statements. I just encourage everybody to go out and vote. Make sure, take a friend, bring a friend to the voting polls. Go out and make sure that Altadena makes a statement with their voice and their votes. Okay, we're going to move on to our communication committee. Nick Aronson, Councilmember Aronson.
I'm just going to send, in lieu of the time, I'll send the council some updates of what we're doing, and I'll just tell the community, we're still working on some media campaign for the election and a new survey to know what you're thinking and how we can get hold of it. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, and I love that survey. That was pretty cool. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Okay, so our Safe Streets, Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair Jones. I'll be quick, but it's full. Let us remember, it is getting darker earlier. We've had more collisions happening, so please, please, please be careful. And next month will be the World Day of Remembrance. One year ago, we lost two of our neighbors, Tarnie Faloon and Kent Pulver, simply trying to cross the street. So let's remember them on November, November the 19th. The Safe Streets Committee meeting was going to be actually scheduled for Thursday, but now that we're going to be having the candidate forum, it'll be on the 26th. We'll be talking about the West San Gabriel Valley Area Plan as it relates to mobility. We also had recently passed an extension of the Metro Micro through September 2024. And we really need to start thinking about transit as an option for us to move around our community. Also, GoSGV has e-bike rentals, and you can learn more. Tomorrow, there's a meeting at Throop Unitarian Church, which is a, going to be a two-hour conference on safer streets, stronger towns. That's co-hosted by Pasadena Complete Streets. Also, we just entered Phase Two of the Los Angeles County Bicycle Master Plan update. And the Bicycle Master Plan can really help make our streets safer for all road users since we don't have sidewalks everywhere. It does really, it is really a opportunity for us to look at streets. We did have two bicyclist collisions last month with cars, so it can really help all of us be safer. We're going to be doing some proactive work there. And then I just want to read really quickly, if it's okay, since it's really important. Traffic safety is one of the main concerns in Altadena. So on October 4th and 5th, we did the Historic Walk to School Day, and I want to just read really quickly, a brief synopsis, written by one of our Safe Streets Committee members, Sarah Wolf, who championed all of this. So Altadena celebrated Walk to School Day with a series of community-centered events promoting the merits of a pedestrian-friendly lifestyle. The annual event aimed at encouraging walking as a healthier mode of commuting and saw participation from local political figures, school administrators, and families. The day commenced at the Altadena Library, where Assemblymember Chris Holden took the stage alongside Jubilee Byfield Field Deputy for Representative Judy Chu. Dominic Corey, from California State Senator Portantino's office, was there in full support. The Assembly heard Pat Sutherland, Town Councilmember, reminisce about her childhood experience of walking to school, emphasizing the nostalgic value of the community bond it fosters. At Farnsworth Park, Nick Aronson delivered a compelling discourse of the significant impact walking could have in combating juvenile diabetes. His speech underscored the broader health implications resonating well with the audience comprised of students, parents, school administrators. Shout out to Public Works, LA County, and also our Board of Supervisors Office for supporting all of the walks. Each event saw an estimated attendance of 60 to 70 individuals, a mix of students, parents, and school staff. The vibrant enthusiasm, almost done, among the young attendees was palpable, something that will be vividly captured in the photos from the event. This was the largest Walk to School Day in the history of Altadena with eight schools representing Let's Have More. The collaborative effort displayed on Walk to School Day not only highlighted the communal ethos of Altadena, but also shared ambition to foster healthier lifestyles among our younger generation.
Thank you for that. Thank you. It was a really good Walk to School Day. It was very good. Okay, we're going to move on to our general public comment. Do we have all the public comment cards? Okay, oh.
Okay, we have two public comments. One is Kevin Singleton, and one is Karen Gibson. In the interest of time, we've got two minutes per. So Kevin, if you want to come up, I know you've got multiple items, so you've got two minutes total.
Okay. Hello. My name's Kevin Singleton. I live in Sylvia's Track District, but it doesn't really matter which district I live in. The three issues that popped up this summer that were adversely affecting just about everybody, whether, doesn't matter what side you're on, is they're all, there's a common factor. It's all the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works. One of those, the first one, was an announcement in April that they were going to change the streetlights to LED. I'm not opposed to LED streetlights, but the problem is, the brightness that they put on my block is way too bright. When I contacted Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, they said, oh, no, that's the one that's supposed to go there. Contrary to that statement, it's not. And I would like some accountability for Los Angeles County Department of Street Lighting to change our lights to a less bright light. The other issue was this big push for no parking signs being put for the purposes of street sweeping. In my opinion, that is governmental overreach. We like Altadena without all these rules. If you want those rules, go to Pasadena, go to Los Angeles. ADUs are becoming more common than not nowadays, that don't have off-street parking. Why should we have to move our cars just for the purposes of street sweeping? Our family's owned our house since 1955. There's been street sweeping regardless of all this, and no problem. Last one is the trash issues, which were already discussed. Thank you very much.
Karen?
Karen Gibson. Oops, Karen Gibson.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the chance to, to just take a moment. For the candidates who are still here, please let me know if you intend to participate in the candidate forum on Thursday. I'd love to know that from you. I know it's been a very tight schedule, and we are grateful for the library accommodating us. I'm from Neighbors Building a Better Altadena. We are partnered with Eric Pierce and AltadenaElection.org, which he's been updating madly. And we are going to be moderated this time by the League of Women Voters. They're pros, very good. So we're looking forward to a really good conversation on Thursday. It was from 6:00 only till 7:45. We need to be out of the library by 8:00. But that's just enough time to let these folks wow us and show us what they've got and what their ideas are, and to become more informed, more engaged, more cohesive voters. So thanks for the moment. Appreciate it.
Karen, will they receive questions ahead of time from the League?
NBBA prepares the questions, and they have gotten those questions.
They have gotten them already.
And many of the candidates have already sent them back to us. Eric is posting.
Someone's shaking their head, no.
What's that?
Someone's shaking their head. They didn't get them.
Okey-dokey. All right. Well, I'll have to get with you.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, you're welcome. Okay. Okay, we're going to move on to our Census Track report, and I, I have a Census Track report. Okay, and basically, there's a new stop sign, a four-way stop that we've waited six years for, and it's at Windsor and Figaroa. It'll be a stop sign temporarily, and then it'll be a four-way signal. So it's Windsor and Figaroa, and the stop sign is going in really fast since they started, but it's And the stop sign is going in really fast since they started, but it's been six years waiting. Thank you. That's my Census Track report. Okay.
Chair.
Anything else?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
If I may, just really quick, really quick.
Yeah, sure.
Because it's bugging me. When the UWS people were up here, and I talked about them leaving the cans down, the lids down, they were just like, oh, yeah, drivers, whatever. And then Victoria said, oh, yeah, I heard it was a thing with the way, and they were just sitting there nodding, like they knew that that was a problem, but they wanted to go by with me, and that, that really pissed me off. So I'm just putting that on the record.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, all those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned.
Okay, we only need to remove the tables tonight, not the chairs, so if we can help strike.